Can we do a roll call of the commissioners, please?
Commissioner Quigg. Commissioner Choi.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
Chair Chan.
Here.
All planning commissioners are present.
Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any motions on the floor or comments about the minutes?
Move to approve.
All right, there is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's approval of minutes has been moved and seconded. Can we do the vote, please?
Commissioner Quigg.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
I'll abstain since I was not here last time.
Commissioner Wong.
Ditto, I'll abstain.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
Chair Chan.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 302.
All right, the next item on the agenda is public communication. This is time reserved on the agenda for any public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are nonetheless the purview of the Planning Commission. Staff, do we have any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom?
We have no speaker slips or hand raised on Zoom.
Okay, then, moving on, we're now on the public hearing, item 4A. Public hearing to consider design review, conditional use permit, and exception applications for a master sign program at the Alexandria Campus for Life Science Development at 6 Rollins Road, 20 Rollins Road, 30 Rollins Road, 231 Millbrae Avenue, 230 Harriet Tubman Way, 201 Adrian Road, and 231 Adrian Road in the Transit-Oriented Development zoning district. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, we're just pulling it up here. Good evening, Chair Chan and planning commissioners. I'm Nestor Guevar, our senior planner, and I'll be presenting item 4A before you tonight. As a way of background, the Alexandria Center for Life Science Development was approved by the Planning Commission back in December 2021. This is a life science center that includes about 570,000 square feet. And it's located in the TOD zone, which is a transit-oriented development zone in the Millbrae Station area specific plan. The applicant is now applying for the master sign program for the development as well as the tenant, the building tenant signage. This map here just shows the location of the project in blue. As mentioned, it's located close to the Millbrae Station area in the MSASP in the TOD zone. This slide here shows the site plan for the development. It includes five buildings in total, three of which are for the life science use, Buildings 1, 2, and 3, as well as an amenity building on the corner of Rollins Road and Millbrae Avenue, and a parking garage as well. Staff notes that for the building tenant signage for the three life science buildings, there would be a maximum of two skyline wall signs per building allowed. And now I'll just be going through the elevations for the different buildings, showing the signage here on the red boxes. First is Building 1, the north elevation with the two locations here. Building 1, east elevation. Building 1, west elevation. And then moving on to Building 2, the north elevation first. And the west elevation. Building 3, south elevation here. Then the north elevation for Building 3. And the west elevation for Building 3. And here is the amenity building with the signage as well. In addition to the building tenant signage, each building will have its own address signage as well. The slide here shows the building tenant signage for, or the building address signage for 231 Adrian Road. But there's also building address signage for 30 Rollins and 230 Harriet Tubman Way. The garage also has signage and on the master sign program that's included as attachment 2, the applicant includes two options for project identity signage on the garage. The Planning Commission may choose a preferred option, and this here is option 1 on the screen. And this is option 2. And this is on the garage facing the wall of the garage that's facing south. Along with the project identification on the south side, the garage also features ground floor signage by the parking entrance, as seen on the screen here. The development also includes directional signage. This includes both vehicle signage and/or vehicle directional signage and pedestrian signage as well. The project also includes a tagline sign with the Alexandria Center Life Science Tagline. Here you see a rendering of what it would look like on the landscape wall, and it is located around the corner of Millbrae and Rollins. As mentioned earlier, as part of this project for the master sign program, there's a conditional use permit component to it as well. And the CUP is required because there's a freestanding sign that's larger than eight square feet and also taller than four feet high. This freestanding sign that identifies the project site measures 35 square feet. And along with the conditional use permit in the master sign program, the project also includes an exception. And this exception is for, to allow the project to exceed the maximum permitted sign area for Buildings 1, 2, and 3. So that would be the south and north sides of Building 1, the east and north sides of Building 2, and the north side of Building 3. Staff notes that the aggregate sign area allowance, after totaling up all of the pronages for all buildings, would not be exceeded. And with that said, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the master sign program, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting a resolution approving the designer review permit exception and conditional use permit applications for a master sign program at the Alexandria Center for Life Science Development, subject to the conditions of approval in Attachment 1, Exhibit A. Staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is here in person as well.
Thank you, Nestor. Questions from the commission? Oh, Commissioner Wong?
Hi, Nestor. Thanks for the presentation. On the package that was provided, it has different profiles of the different sides of the buildings and then orientation and the notations for the directions, north elevation, west elevation, they all seem to be really confused to me because, for example, page 29 has north elevation, but then it calls out it's facing Rollins Road, so in my estimation that's facing west, east, right? So a lot of these directions are just confusing to me, wondering if that has to be corrected or if there's, you know, they're just orienting north is the front of the building. Or they have a different notation.
It might help to look at sheet number 8. It includes the map, excuse me, with the location for all the signage. It's towards the start of the packet.
Right, I understand the orientation of the building. It's just that they call out the different directions and positions of the building.
I believe that's our applicant, and they're saying that it's drawing pan-north rather than actual north.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Quigg?
One of, do we have an option or they haven't decided what one of these had option 1 and option 2?
So that would be for the garage signage?
Right.
You can recommend an option tonight?
Oh.
Yes.
Now or after?
Tonight, when we discuss, yeah. Or when you discuss.
Commissioner Choi?
Sure. So in general, it seems like all the colors of the printout at least are off. I think everything has a green tint to it. It's making it hard to match what's on visually and the description. Do we, will the material and color sample be, there's a note there that says it'll be deferred to future submittal. Does that come to the Planning Commission again, or is that just ministerial?
So yeah, for the building tenant signage, that would come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair Davis, do you have any, oh, sorry. Mr. Wong, do you have more questions?
Right, so also some of the signage say to be determined, like, especially I'm more concerned about the side of the building facing true north that faces the other, you know, TOD projects. And, you know, it depends on the occupancy, the tenants, you know, obviously there appears that there's no current tenant listed, so we don't have the exact name, the color, the materials, you know, the lighting, the intensity. So it's kind of like my concern is that there's kind of a blank check here. We just have a location with a rectangle where the sign's gonna be, but we don't really know the materials, the colors, the lighting, and so how do we address that?
So those details would be provided at a future submittal once the tenant is providing the signage. Those would come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
And you would see those details at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Davis? I had one additional question. So with respect to the, there was another sort of either/or in the sign program that I noticed in terms of halo lighting versus backlit. Is that also something that we could make a recommendation on here, or is that sort of, is the sign program saying that the tenants would have the option to pursue either when it comes to mounting their sign?
I believe it's something that you could provide a recommendation on as well.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Chair Chan.
Oh, yeah.
So the way that the sign program is proposed, giving the tenant an option to have backlit or halo, so just giving them some flexibility, so that's what's proposed.
Great, thanks. All right, any other questions for staff? All right, thanks, Nestor. With the, does the applicant have any other additional comment they want to provide on the sign program? Okay. I had one other question. I'm not sure if either the applicant or the staff could better answer this. But I do recall a couple of years ago, the city council discussed possible replacement for the monument sign that was at Millbrae Avenue and Rollins Road. Just curious, you know, there is discussion of a monument sign. It doesn't say anything about a city monument sign, so I'm just curious how those discussions have been going. It seemed like the council was keen to get that resolved.
Yeah, the city's still working with the applicant on that. The applicant is, we're exploring a couple of different locations in that vicinity, and it hasn't been finalized yet, so something we anticipate will be coming forth second quarter of next year, roughly.
Would that come to the Planning Commission, or would that go straight to the council?
It might go straight to the council, kind of depending on where it's located. We'll have to see the final location and then make a decision there.
All right, I think we're ready for public comment on this item. Is there any speaker slips or hands raised?
We do have one hands raised on Zoom. Aaron Ferber. Can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, I'm the signage consultant that was working with the Alexandria team on this project, and I just wanted a point of clarification. All the tenant building mounted signs are indicated in the table as halo limited only.
Are you referring to page 5 of the packet or a different page?
Yeah, that's correct, in the sign type matrix.
Yeah, sorry about the confusion. I'm Jordan with Alexandria. So we do want to preserve flexibility and would like to give the tenant an option to come back to the Planning Commission with their design. Also, if we can leave it as halo or backlit, flexibility, best.
Thanks.
And just to add to that, the packet before you tonight does have both options listed, backlit or halo.
Right, yeah, I see that. Yeah, thanks. Any commissioners have comments? Oh, oh, sorry. Any other public commenters?
No other hands raised or slips from the audience.
All right, great. Oh, Commissioner Quigg, do you have?
No.
Do we have a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, can we do a vote to close public comment?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Choi?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes 50. Public comment is now closed.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I'd like to put my two cents in that I prefer the name compared to the logo. Maybe I don't understand the logo enough, but to me. Can you explain it? The logo?
The logo is the Alexandria Lighthouse. It's the birthplace of Alexandria.
Okay, just, I could tell it was a lighthouse, but I just couldn't see how.
Yeah, Alexandria, as in the town of Alexandria.
Oh, not Alexandria.
Not Alexandria, not originally.
Okay.
While you're up here.
Have you been?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Have you been using that logo a while?
While you're here. So on that, for the logo scheme, it says masked and painted logo mark on facade wall. I imagine it's a lot more subtle than what we see here on print, right? It's because now it's a very enormous black oval on what seems to be a subtle wall.
Yeah, I would be happy to do different color scheme and come back as well, or another subsequent approval, but I don't think it's gonna be a black or that much of a contrast on the wall. Maybe a darker tone of what you see there on the material.
So for tonight, are you or Aaron from RSM able to describe for us? Because I think it'll be doing this a lot of disservice if we're casting a vote just simply based on what we see.
Yeah, so we, so what we have done before in the past is using a darker tone of the material. If the material is a lighter tone, so let's say if it's a natural wood color, it would be a darker wood color. Or if it's a darker material, it would be a lighter tone of that material, that color. So usually it's within the same family.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you for that. Appreciate it, thanks.
Any other commissioners have comments they want to offer at this time? Yeah, Commissioner Wong?
I would tend to agree with Commissioner Quigg that I think the wording, rather than the enormous logo, might make more sense. You know, the symbol is extremely large and might give the impression that it almost represents our city. People drive by on the freeway, you see the big symbol, they go, oh, what is that? Is that Alexandria, the city? Or it's a little bit confusing about what represents our city. And then it kind of conflicts a little bit with our theme and our city. The wording is a little bit more clearer that it's the life sciences building, doesn't represent the entire city. And might be a little bit more clearer also for, even for business and passerby's that they can recognize that that's a life sciences building and recognize that that's their campus also, rather than something representing our city. Those are my two comments. My other four cents is that, just very concerned about, again, the signage facing the TOD residences, because there are people there that are gonna be full-time residents, sleeping, and if there is a bright illuminated light shining into their housing and residences, I might be concerned, not as concerned on the other sides of the building, although in the future, I'm not sure if there's other planned large residences planned for that, that people might have an issue with, but just be conscious and neighborly so that we look at the intensity and the reflection and make sure that we're considerate of the residential properties at the Bard Station.
Any other comments from commissioners? Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much. I think the sign program is good. Just to tag off that, one of those last comments, how far away are the two developments apart? They're quite a distance apart. I don't think these signs are neon or flashing or anything, so probably the brightness on the, facing the Gateway Project won't be a problem. Can somebody confirm that? And as for the choices, it's your logo and it's your building, so I have no problem with using the logo. And it's a garage, so the more decorative it can be to mask a garage, I think the better it is. So that's it.
Anyone else? All right, I'll offer my comments on this then. I would agree with Commissioner Quigg and Commissioner Wong regarding which of the two garage sign options. I do prefer the smaller one. The other concern that I have is kind of similar to what Commissioner Wong was saying about the brightness of the signs, although not necessarily just the signs facing the residential tenants, but just the light in general. And that's part of why I asked about the halo versus backlit. My impression is that the halo-type signs are less bright and, you know, cast less light pollution into the sky and surrounding area. Previous sign programs have mentioned, given us some indication of whether signs are dimmable and how bright they are. I didn't see anything in this sign program about that, so I'm a little bit, you know, I'd like to see, I would feel more comfortable if I had some indication that these would not be, because this is a pretty dramatic increase in electronic signage in our city, and so I just want to make sure that we're mindful of the light pollution effect, potential light pollution consequences before we ask this, so I don't know if you, the staffer, the applicant, has any more information on that? Yes? Thanks.
So in terms of the tenant signage, they will be coming to you for review and approval, and at that time, I'm sure light pollution studies and have a better indication of the lighting level, the color, the material, all the details that you would need to approve the sign. We're just asking for approval for locations right now, and we're not including their signage in our package because we want to make sure that they have, they take the time to design it, think it through, and have all those answers for you. Because if I was to include their details in the package now, I would only have half the information and wouldn't be able to answer your question. Does that help, make you feel a little better?
Yeah, no, that definitely does. I actually, I actually am curious, I know that Icon has a temporary sign up there. Like, is that roughly the scope and scale of a tenant sign that you're proposing here?
I don't think so, and I actually don't know, so I can't speak for them. And their temporary signage, we also didn't review that. So I didn't have any input in that, so sorry, I don't have any information. I think the main intent for this package is for the monument sign, the built sign that's coming with the corn shell part of the building and with the site. Since we're finishing up the corn shell building and also the site and the parking lot and all of that, Icon is doing their TI build out and they're still in construction for a few months. And I'm sure they're going to want to get their signage review and approve way ahead of them moving in. So they'll be coming back to you for that.
Great, thanks so much.
The question for staff, would every tenant then be coming to the planning commission every time they're ready to present what their signage proposal would be?
In this case, yes.
Okay, alright, got you, thank you.
To clarify, only those tenants.
For, for the skyline, correct, yes, thank you.
We do have to make sure that there's not too many signs. If there's too many individual tenants. I mean, it's such a beautiful building that we're just going to have the ones at the top, is that right?
That's correct, and per the master sign program, only two tenant signs would be allowed per building.
That would be whoever is renting.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's such a beautiful building, I'd hate to have it cluttered with signage.
Yeah, each building wouldn't have more than, more than two signs.
But our approval tonight would prescribe that, it's showing the location and size of those signage, right?
Exactly, yeah, thank you.
The, the proposed sign locations on page eight shows the potential locations that those signage could be. But at any time, the sign program prescribes it no more than two tenant wall signs located. So if you've got two on the north, two on the west, they could choose. It gives them flexibility to choose.
As we are. Conditional use permit an exception. I just hate a lot of signage, so I just want to make sure.
So I'd like to just clarify if the applicant really is okay with either the garage billing as option, the first, the planning commission approving either option one or two? Or is this an approval for either or, was that the intent?
I believe the applicant has, has given the city an option to choose either one or option two. If I'm mistaken, please let me know. And, you know, it's sounding like the commission, at least majority of the commission has a preference for option one. So if any motion.
Okay, so.
We should include that.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit and exception applications for master sign program for the Alexandria Center for Life Science Development at six Rollins Road, 20 Rollins Road, 30 Rollins Road, 231 Millbrae Avenue, 230 Harriet Tubman Way, 201 Adrian Road and 231 Adrian Road in the Transit oriented development zoning district, subject to the conditions found in attachment one, and also adopting option one of the garage mounted signage on page 27 of the design package.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Can we do the vote or any discussion, further discussion?
Oh, before the vote, I just want to state that I am fine with either option. Based on what I'm hearing, the description of the logo option would be, so I'll, I'll, I'll vote yes, but I'm, I'm fine with either option.
Alright, sounds like we're ready to vote.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Shai?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five zero.
Alright, moving on, oh, sorry, I need to. The action of the planning commission is considered final pending a 10-day appeal period and payment of the required appeal fee. For anyone that wishes to appeal the decision of the planning commission, please contact the city clerk at 650-259-2414 or etran@ci.milbrae.ca.us. Thank you, alright, moving on to the new business item 5A. Study session of the planning commission to receive input on Millbrae citywide objective residential design standards and zoning code adjustments. Staff, is there a presentation? Yes, for this item, I'd like to present the city's consultant. The city contracted with Lisa Wise Consulting and on behalf of Lisa Wise Consulting, we have Monica and she can introduce her team as well.
Thank you, Roscoe, for the introduction. I'm Monica Sidlick, I'm the associate with Lisa Wise Consulting. We are planning economics and implementation, planning firm, based in San Luis Obispo. And I work out of the San Francisco office along with our associate Caroline. And we've been working with Roscoe and Nestor and Michelle on this project for the better part of the last year. And we're really glad to be here to talk with you about the project and tell you a little bit about our progress so far and hear, hear what you all have to say about the emerging standards. So our agenda tonight is fairly straightforward. We're going to start with an overview of the project and its objectives. Talk a little bit about what we've done since we initiated the project. Review the emerging material that we have under development. And then, most importantly, we'd like to hear from you all. So starting with an overview of the project, a little bit about the occasion for this project in the first place. So the cities adopted policies direct this project essentially. Another, a number of plans and other policy documents that the city continuously implements direct us to develop objective residential design standards. So a few of the key policies that are essentially this project's marching orders are those listed here on the slide. Generally speaking, we're, we're told to adopt development standards for residential development in a way that's compliant with state law. And throughout the policy documents that you have on the books, there's a lot of guidance about exactly what these should, should address. Now, because the Millbrae zoning code is currently pretty silent on design, we, we will develop these design standards to essentially pick up where the basic development standards leave off. So we won't be modifying the basic development standards that are in your code for, for the basics for height, FAR, density, setback. But we will be adding design standards to those. So we're also here to bring Millbrae zoning ordinance into compliance with state law. So as I'm sure you're aware, there's been a flood of housing-related legislation at the state level in the last handful of years. All of it is generally an effort, one way to address the statewide housing crisis, to streamline and facilitate housing production across the state, while at the same time giving local jurisdictions the opportunity and the tools to do so in a way that's right for each individual community. So key among these pieces of legislation is SB 330. It's about four years old now. So what it does is it prohibits the city of Millbrae and any other city from reducing the allowed housing capacity through regulatory or administrative barriers, from denying any residential project on the basis of subjective standards, meaning the standards by which residential projects are evaluated and if needed denied must be objective in nature, which means quantifiable, you can't argue about it. And also prevents the city from adopting any new non-objective standards for residential or mixed-use projects. So the council directed staff to work with a consultant to develop objective design standards. And that's in a nutshell how we got here and why we're here presenting on this project. So just a few words about objective design standards. It's important that every community identifies what objective design standards should address. So in general, and in our experience working on these, objective design standards, we call them ODS, they should do what's on the slide. They need to acknowledge existing patterns, to reflect community, to gather and reflect community input, to anticipate density bonus projects, to implement the policy direction that's already on the books, and to lend a measure of predictability to the planning process so that applicants essentially aren't surprised when they go in for approval. So if we think about what this means to the whole review and permitting process, historically, projects have been evaluated through a discretionary review process before a designer review board or a planning commission. Now SB 330 requires that any residential project has, must have a ministerial path to approval. That's the big change that all cities in California are grappling with. So the ODS are essentially the city's opportunity to identify ahead of time what would have been discussed through designer view and what would have been required through that discretionary process. It's hard to identify that in advance, but that's how the process unfolds post SB 330. And that way, all of the standards are known to the applicant ahead of time. So ODS can address a lot of physical design elements and we'll go into more detail of those a few slides ahead. So looking at this project's overall objectives for the city of Millbrae. Ultimately, we'll be developing ODS, illustrated, clear ODS for, for single-family development, duplexes, triplexes, accessory dwelling units, multifamily development and residential mixed-use development. And we'll ensure that the standards implement established policy and the direction from the community. And we recently determined that in terms of organization, what this will sort of look like, we'll be developing two separate books, a single-family duplex, triplex, and ADU design standards book, and a separate multifamily and residential mixed-use design standards book. And both of them will be incorporated by reference into the code. We'll also be revising the code such that single-family duplex, triplex and ADU projects are reviewed at the staff level. And we'll be revising the permit process by creating a new nondiscretionary residential design review process for multifamily projects. So they'll proceed through the, the hearing bodies that they always have, but the, the findings that are used to evaluate the project will essentially be the ODS that we develop. So we've been at this for the better part of a year, as I mentioned, we've done a lot of community outreach in that time. So this next slide shows the community engagement. So if we go on to the next slide, we've got the community engagement here on top and other project milestones on the bottom. So we kicked the project off at the beginning of the year. We published a technical analysis and recommendations report, and then we turned to the community. We had an online questionnaire open for about six weeks. We had a CEAC meeting in the summer. We had a community workshop in September, and we're here before you know. And we'll have a similar study session with the council early next year. And then we'll submit a complete admin draft in the first quarter of next year. Following that, a public review draft, and then we'll refine that draft with the staff and the community and decision-making bodies through the course of 2025. And we'll adopt the code amendments and the standard booklets by the end of the year. So looking specifically at our community engagement efforts, on the next slide, we show, so we got a project website up early in the year. We put out regular social media postings to alert the community that their input is, is desired and we're, we're seeking it. These efforts have really built upon each other. We got, I think, a total of 70 some odd respondents to the questionnaire. We had a great CEAC meeting, we had a hybrid online workshop here in council chambers in September where we got a lot of good input and we're here to collect more input. So now I want to go on to the next part of the presentation, which is reviewing briefly what exactly will be illustrating, sort of what we have our eye on. The lists here on the next handful of slides, they're not at all set in stone. We are looking to you to help us define the list, to add to it, to take items off of it, and to generally help direct our work going forward so that we make sure that we respond, we respond to the design elements that are on your mind. So for the single-family duplex and triplex and ADU design book, we'll, as I mentioned, we'll pick up where the existing development standards leave off and we'll think about design. So for massing and scale, we'll be looking at articulation, upper story step backs, roof form, plate height, you can see all of these elements somewhere in the image, right? Let's move on to the next slide here. So we'll, we'll look at all of these, the planes on the building massing, what stepped back? How does the, the form of the roof correspond to the spaces below? How does the, the massing relate to the neighboring homes? How does the, the massing of the home protect the privacy of the, of the residents in, in the subject property as well as neighbors? And so we'll look at all of that. And then from the community, as we've been speaking with the community, we've heard that it's important that development on hillsides conforms to the topography of the hills. It's important to the community members that roof forms match those of neighboring homes and respond to existing patterns. We've heard that duplexes and triplexes should be in the form of a large house with pitched roof forms rather than small apartment buildings or townhomes is what we've heard as we've asked the community. So all of those, all that feedback and yours will go into the development of those standards. So next, next up, building design, we'll be looking at the orientation and the entrance, entryways are key features of any home. We'll look at the windows. We'll look at the windows, the doors, placement, size, patterns. Garage, of course, parking is central to any residential development. Where is it? How visible is it? How is it designed? Materials and colors, how specific do we want to be? And all architectural details, details that, that are demonstrative of the architectural style of the home. Visibility, utilities, anything you don't want to see. And additions and remodels. So we'll be looking at those. And when we asked the community, we heard that generous and visible entries are very important and that it's okay if materials of second stories additions vary as long as it's well-designed and high-quality. So the next slide, we'll look at site design. Driveway width, placement, landscaping, paving. We heard from the community that landscaping with variety and depth is most important. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. Part of that first book will also address accessory dwelling units. So it's a slightly smaller subset of development of, of design features that we'll address for ADUs. But we will look at entrance design, windows and privacy. Let's go on to the next slide, please. Right. So where's the door? How prominent is it? Is it recessed? Where are the windows? Do we have the same standards for the primary unit and the ADUs when it comes to proximity to neighbors and visibility? What about when the, the ADU is in the front of the home? A converted garage versus in the rear? Do we have different standards? We want to think about all of these things. If a garage is converted to an ADU, what sort of measures do we want to require for the, the front setback and the landscaping and the paving in the front? And as we know, the city does require that ADUs are consistent in design and style and quality with the primary unit. Is there anything else we want to address? Do we want to be more specific about that requirement? And from the community, we heard that distinctive entries are important. It's important that the ADU matches the existing structure. We heard that there should be no trace of a former driveway if, if a parking area is converted to an ADU. We heard that front garage conversions are okay as long as they're well-designed. Open space should be ample and well-designed in the rear as well, and that privacy and noise are a concern. Okay. So for single-family duplex, triplex, and ADU design, we also have been looking to the community to understand what's important to different neighborhoods. So let's move on to the next slide. So what are the character-defining features of each residential neighborhood in the city? And what design standards are right for the different areas of the city? So we, as consultants, documented our observations in the technical analysis that we released in May. And then from the community, we heard that the downtown in El Camino, that the characteristic features are Art Deco style, Spanish, Mission style, and that buildings in these areas warrant more attention when it comes, comes to design and character. We heard that in the Highlands, mid-century and Spanish style is more common and that these areas are really about walkability and trees and landscaping. The Green Hills and Lomitas, Lomita Hills, we, we heard that people think of ranch-style homes and trees. So we want to think about how the standards should, should enforce existing patterns. And in the Meadows and Glenview Highlands and Bayside Manor and Marina Vista, we heard that we need to address design on small lots and the need for more landscaping in these areas. So it'll be essential that these area-specific standards are reflected in the design standards that we developed. So moving on to multifamily and residential mixed-use design book. So we'll look at a lot of the same elements, but of course, the, the scale is different. So when we look at building massing and scale, we'll be looking at horizontal and vertical building articulation somewhat separately. We'll be looking at upper-story step backs based on height. Let's move on to the next slide if you can. Roof form again, floor-to-floor height. And then how do we want to address when higher-intensity buildings are adjacent to lower-intensity buildings? And we heard from the community that varied roof forms and not just one large flat roof or a repeated roof form is a, is a priority for the community. So we'll also look at building design and, and unit design. Again, orientation and entrances, windows and doors, parking, visibility and design, and colors and materials. And let's move on to the next slide. So from the community, we heard that the facade articulation is a real priority, that high-quality windows are a priority, that commercial frontages on the ground level should be very porous and accessible and transparent. And that the community would like to see energy, energy efficiency written into the standards in terms of materials and design. Okay, and for site design, next slide, we'll look at private open spaces, common open spaces, landscaping, fencing and screening. And we heard from the community that landscaping at the building base is really very important. That's a summary of the, the topics that we have in mind, that what we're sort of tackling as we, as we look at different buildings in different areas of the city. And at this point, if we can move to the discussion questions, we would ask that you tell us your thoughts on standards in certain Milbrae neighborhoods. And we can see all the questions here. We're really looking for feedback on, to keep us moving forward.
Yeah, Chair Chan, before we dive into the discussions questions, staff would like to provide a few examples of designs that we have, have encountered recently and some of the designs that we have approved on these projects. So if we can probably just go over that a little bit, and then we can dive into the discussion questions. But, but also might want to open up to public hearing before.
Sounds great.
Good evening again. Senior Planner Nestor Gavara here. And I'll just go over a few examples of projects that we see both as, as staff, as well as projects that, that you will recognize that you've seen in your role as planning commissioners before. This project here, we received it, we worked with the applicant, but this was kind of a first draft of it. It's for a second-story addition, but as you can see, it, it doesn't really fit with the existing residents, right? It's, it's not visually harmonious. The roof material, the material in general and the roof form is, is not consistent. And yeah, the use of materials is, is different as well. This is another project that, that we have, haven't formally received as a project, but we've worked with the applicant. And it shows this is the front elevation of it, and it's a second-story addition as well. But it shows sort of an inconsistent mix of materials in, in the front there. And if we go to the next slide on the rear, you see on the second story, there's an inconsistency as well in regards to the plate heights from the first story to the second story, as well as the sort of design for the roofing on the, on the first level going back. This project might look a little bit more familiar to you. We worked with the applicant. This kind of shows a better, better mix of materials as well as a, a, a use of materials that are consistent with the architectural style of, of, of the building that, that's being built. So it has the tile, the stucco, use of wood to kind of capture that, that Mediterranean, Spanish-style look. And this next, this next project, it might look familiar to you as well. This was actually vacant lot, so this is a full, a fully new, new residence. And it shows a good example of a contemporary take on, on a modern or on a ranch-style home with, again, a good use of materials. You see some stucco, you see the use of stone on the first story and, and window placement as well as, as trim around the windows as well. This project is built already in the city. It is, it features, or it's a, a, not a mixed-use, but a, I don't believe it's a mixed-use. It's residential project, multifamily. It, it shows some articulation, but maybe it, it, more could be done to kind of break it up and, and add some articulation and, and massing. And on the next slide, we'll see the project here that was approved a couple of years ago at the former Office Depot site that shows a good use of materials. Staff worked with the applicant for, for quite a few months on kind of refining it into this kind of full, final, final form of it that shows good use for the, both the materials and then ground floor activation as mentioned earlier.
Thank you. And so, Commissioner, so you can see through some of the examples that Nestor provided, what we, we typically see before the projects arrive for your review and kind of the end product of some of the ones that are successful. So we're trying to get from, you know, try to, try to aim for the architecture and the design, these ones that, that the city is very proud of and, and wants to see in the future. And so, you know, that's, that's the goal here is to get to, you know, those types of designs and the standards. So that's, that's what we're, that's what we're shooting for. So with that, Chair.
Thanks. There was a lot of material to digest in that. And I was sure we could be spending a lot of time going over all of this. So I think if the commission is okay with it, I think it would be good to see if there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment now so they don't have to wait for a very long time before they get an opportunity to chime in. Do we have any speaker slips or hands raised on Zoom?
No speaker slips and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. All right, so I think for, I, I would like to put an idea out there for the commission. You know, I think there's a, a lot of, we could go pretty deep here, like slide by slide. We could go on these discussion questions. But I also feel like there might be, we might have high-level reactions. So I don't know, how, how amenable are people to maybe starting with high-level reactions to the divine design standards and intention of them? And then maybe we can then go through the discussion questions and maybe then go through each of the successive slides on the more specific emerging standards? How do people feel about that? Okay, great. Who would like to offer their first high-level reaction to the design standards?
I don't know if it's a reaction, but what I'm trying to get into my brain is, what are the struggles that our applicants are having? What is it in our guidelines that isn't made clear? And how do we make it clear? I would love to see an example of a design guideline, just even from another city, because I know other cities have more developed guidelines than we do. I don't know how you're going to make it clear, how, oh, we like this, we don't like that. Do this, not that. I, I don't, I don't see how we're doing this. We've got some input from the public, okay, great. But we're trying to make it easier on applicants, basically, to streamline the process. So where are the sticking points? What is it that they're not understanding or that we're having to massage because we're not clear?
Thank you. Sorry.
Do you want me to respond as we go or?
Sure, it seems like you're eager, so why not?
I just want to make, I just want to make sure I, I respond to all the questions and comments. Just really briefly, because I know, you know, this could, this could take a while. But to answer your question, the, the city, up until the adoption of the MSASP in 2016, really didn't have very good guidance in, in design and, and certainly none for single-family homes. So there was a, a draft that I, I believe I saw that was never adopted. It was very preliminary. And so the city has been kind of lacking in that direction. So this is, this is the, this is an effort that would kind of establish the city's first residential design standards for a single-family. We do have design review standards that kind of speak to the findings, you know, that we have to make when we approve a design review permits, neighborhood character, things like that. But as it was, with respect to the actual design of that, this would be kind of the first. And so what we're seeing and, and what we, or we're lacking is specific direction to architects and designers. For example, use of materials. It, it, if, if they have no direction, they could probably come in with a stucco house and vinyl windows, nothing else. No window trim. So I think one thing that we do is add window trim as some architectural design features of that's emblematic of the neighborhood, rafter tails being one, things like that. Using two different materials, so it's not just stucco, maybe have a, a stone base or, or something like that to at least break up some of the aesthetics. So in terms of multifamily, if, if without any concrete direction, the applicant may just choose to design something that is the least interesting, just from a cost perspective. Understanding that is a, a factor. But I think some, some things that could be done better is having like window recesses, for example, to bright relief from the, from the facade would, would help. But also material color palettes to having them choose from a palette of different materials that they could use. And also some examples of projects that, that we'd like to see would, would help as well.
Other commissioners with high-level reactions?
I'll offer my high-level reaction. So I, I'm all in support of establishing a design standard for residential. I think it'll improve our process and the speed by which the, the permits will be approved. I am hesitant and worried that it would, if it's overly prescriptive, it would stifle really an architecture or things that, you know, the, the way a designer might address the site that may not fit the prescribed standard. Whereas if they were to present to a discussion like this, they would have a chance to hear feedback more holistically on the design.
Commissioner Wong, or quick, where do I like to go?
Yes, just some high-level comments on here that, you know, overall, I think the community is pretty much in favor of maintaining kind of the, you know, residential, neighborly, welcoming frontages and very clear entrances, even if there's frontages with outdoor spaces, welcoming spaces and, you know, gathering places. That's kind of a common theme throughout. Other high-level comments is that I'm not sure how this relates to our existing code or if it will trump our existing code. But sometimes having these codes like second-story setbacks is kind of a, doesn't seem to be that we should have kind of a one-size-fits-all. You know, there's several neighborhoods and, and roads like Clearfield where we're on the hillside and, you know, that there are more townhome styles, cake styles. There are several levels. And to have second-story setbacks just doesn't make sense on some of those in some of the neighborhoods. You know, if we maintain the existing character of the neighborhood, that, you know, we want people and encourage people to update and use their creativity and the architect's creativity like. and encourage people to update and use their creativity and the architect's creativity like uh it's noted. Um, so the question is, how do you modernize and allow upgrades to the buildings, the houses, the residences, uh while, you know, just communicating and giving acknowledgement to the existing neighborhood? Because if you just upgrade and only allow them to maintain the same characteristic of the neighborhood, we don't want them to build a 1940s style house, may not want them uh that that looks antiquated and it looks like, you know, really old fashioned. But we wanted to modernize and allow them to use their creativity and have more design elements so that it looks like an upgrade, it looks modern, but just it's, you know, acknowledges the existing neighborhood. You know, maybe gives uh design features or elements to acknowledge uh existing houses and communicate, you know, in a positive way to, uh, you know, I guess be congruent in massing or sizing or some other elements to the existing houses so that it fits in. You know, just like San Francisco, you may see, you know, Victorian next to a very modern house. Um, but they fit together because of the massing and the sizing, but they're not necessarily, they're all, you know, 1900 Victorian houses. So that's something, you know, I'm hoping that the city addresses this and can, you know, update design codes and use this as an opportunity. Uh, the example that was shown uh by Nestor about the modern house on the previous slide, uh, you know, showed very nice modern house uh with all our design codes met, had second story setbacks. But in actuality, that had no neighboring uh house on the right side of the house. It was next to the Mills High School, open lot. So in that case, a second story setback may not necessarily be so critical because there's no neighbor to setback or looking to opposite windows. And you can use more creativity to allow uh more modern design or different or even enlarge it or have some flexibility. That's a second comment. Third comment is that, general comment is that um I'd really like to see a process where the very large developments, mixed use developments, downtown developments, you know, big giant complexes have a partnership with the community, with the planning commission here. Have a study session to propose developments and hear the community concerns before they start drafting up a whole plan. A lot of times for these large developments, by the time it comes to the planning commission here, it's practically designed. It's like, almost like 90% design. And by that time, the developer is not going to want to hear any comments from the planning commission or incorporate a lot of, you know, design elements. And, you know, we know this uh city really well, you know, we're residents, we're elected by the city council. We know the micro climates, the wind issues, uh the traffic, congestion, the neighborhoods, we know the people that live in these areas. And so sometimes it would be really good for these large developments, especially in downtown development or Al Camino, to have a, you know, sit down with the community and say, we're we're putting in big multi-use mixed development. An example of that was like the um El Rancho development where, you know, the orientation of that, you know, they put the swimming pool on the west facing side. Where I know they're get gonna get blasted by wind, you know, wind currents. And uh, you know, there's some comments we could have offered to them or advice or input where we could have partnered and tried to help them design a really even better uh project uh before it came to us at like 90% design. So that's something I would like to see. Um, also, you know, just, you know, like I said, communicating with the downtown areas and the other neighborhoods. You know, if these big developments like the um Office Depot development comes in, you know, there's orientations of buildings and tree plantings that might really help. We can offer advice that would really impact the downtown area because there's just a wind channel that comes down north to south. And if we had a chance to work with them and look at the design, we might be able to offer them ways to help us develop a better downtown to break up wind and and uh you know, environmental issues that would really help our downtown development. And especially if we have a lot of open space next to City Hall here. Uh, we have special districts develop uh designated for special developments. It could really be good to partner with the city, the community, the planning commissions early in the process so that we have a chance to talk about, you know, what we'd like to see. Those are some general comments.
Commissioner Quake?
You've done a great job. Um, I have one question. You did the survey, you know, um with, and then you had a some kind of discussion. Did you ask them the same questions or asking us or or was there much of that?
So the survey, the the, is this working? Yeah, okay. So the online questionnaire was um, it was very visual. It was um, it broken up into multiple sections uh by topic. There is um a summary of the questionnaire and a summary of all the responses we got included in the staff report. I think there's a link to it. And so you can see all the questions. Um, it it's, it's not, it it's different from, I mean, it's it's not the same images and slides that we looked at tonight. Um, it was really more targeted. We asked very uh pointed questions about particular in uh what rate this from one to five? What's your preference? So it was, it was very specific. Um, and yes, the the whole thing is is there, is provided on the project website. There's a link in your packet.
Right, but it was all basically a survey with one to five like you are describing. There wasn't um, like you're asking us a question of what we would like to see. And I don't, if if you gave people attending that same opportunity.
Oh, it was just online, oh, sorry.
Because um we've seen a lot and and, you know, it it's very difficult to answer questions like this because it's so subjective. Um, and and years ago, there would be someone up on Clearfield, which is a very difficult um street. And um, this fellow that was such a great architect that he developed a very modern design and like I think um Alan just said. And it fit, eh even though that the time when we weren't looking uh or wanting that modern design. But um uh it it seemed to have fit in. So, you know, it's just all so subjective. And and if you do drive around San Francisco a lot, um, you do notice a lot of where especially now, the buildings are going up, they're very uh lean designs, you know, they're definitely a much more modern look. And yet, yes, they look out of place somewhat. But then once they're in there, um, and then more stuff is happening, I think sometimes they blend better after the fact than when you're actually trying to design them. So it's um, it's very subjective.
All right, I'll take this opportunity to offer uh my high level reactions. A lot of what has already been said, uh, I I echo a lot of it. And so in particular, you know, how do we set up our applicants for success? How do we ensure there's scope for creativity? You know, some of what uh, some of the discussion also about, you know, how do we make sure we're not being overly prescriptive? Maybe like, you know, in the case that Commissioner Wong brought up with the uh, with the setbacks next to the adjacent lot. I wonder if there's the possibility that like you can, you have the ability to abide by almost all the objective objective standards, but then you would have, you know, the ability to to deviate slightly in order to be able to more fully realize a a vision that you have. I think one thing that's been very consistent uh when I, from what I've seen in my time on the commission is, you know, a lot of people take a lot of pride in the projects they're proposing for us. And I think um, you know, it's, a lot of them have talked about it being their forever home, especially if it's their, when their younger family, younger and larger families um moving into Millbrae. And I think that's actually been another sort of recurring theme is that a lot of the remodels that I've, that we've been, that I've seen while I'm here is like there's a desire for more living space. You know, people are becoming multi-generational households. They're, you know, they're they're families of five or more. And so is there, are there ways in which, you know, some of the, some of our setback and requirements and L- FAR requirements impede the ability to build out that living space for these uh families that want to do more with their, with the their lot and their interior space? I think the other thing, the other high level reaction I have too is respect to uh, is that I think we really need to consider uh costs when we're devising these standards, right? Every, it feels to me like every specific thing uh that we introduce to the standard will have some significant impact on the cost of the project. And, you know, we want to, we, you know, especially if they're individual family fa- if it's a family homeowner, you know, that's, that's a family that we're that has to pay the cost. It's not some deep-pocketed developer. Even the case of deep-pocketed developers, right, we 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 might have, you you know, not, some of those developers are affordable housing developers who uh use tax credits to finance their projects. You know, are we, are we in order, are we giving up units that we could be using to meet our our housing targets uh by being too prescriptive in our multifamily, in multifamily design standards? I think we just need to, let's let's have that be a consideration as we're devising these standards. And one other question I had was, um, I know that uh the some of the objective design standards, the manuals that I saw said, you know, you can either follow the objective standards or you can take a risk and go the subjective standard, uh subjective design review route. Um, is that, would we be offering that option to applicants at the conclusion of this process? Or is it, this is the only track that you can take now uh when you propose a project in Millbrae?
No, we we could, we could offer them that that option. And I think that that's helpful for applicants because um, you know, they they would in fact um choose an option that's works for them. They may want, hey, listen, I want to be, I want this to be efficient and quick and I'll do whatever it is that you require. And um for me, time is money, so we'll do it. Or it's like, you know, hey, we we wanna um uh do something a little bit different. So we want to go to different routes. So it means something that we we could provide. I mean, we're, are, these standards haven't been developed yet, they're in process, and that's kind of why we're we're asking for your opinion. So we'll, that's something that we could look into.
Thanks. And and thanks everyone on the commission for your high level reactions. I think this was really uh productive. How do people feel about maybe going through each of the slides uh that Monica showed us uh for the emerging standards? And maybe having more detailed reactions to each? Is, or do people think that's a good idea?
Sure, Shannon. So um, what I, what I suggest, um, so we have the discussion questions, they're not required. Uh, these are more to kind of get the thinking, you know, your your, the discussion going. Um, and you can use this to tell a discussion, or if you have other input, you're saying, you know, hey, in the Highlands, what we're seeing is we should be more flexible, um, or, you know, this neighborhood should should look into a little bit more or modern homes, things like that. So, but these these are kind of as a starter, kind of like um to get the conversation going. And if anybody could, we don't have to go in order, we could um take them as as you wish.
Yeah, uh, Vice Chair Davis.
I I want to do the questions, not the slides.
I'm sorry?
I I want to do these questions rather than go through slides.
Yeah, sure, sure. We we can do that.
Slide by slide.
All right. Um, all right. So then the first uh discussion question is around specific design standards for certain Millbrae neighborhoods or areas. Does anyone have a reaction to that? All right, yeah, I was looking at it this way. Uh, Vice Chair Davis, yeah.
If, we're gonna have two different sets. One is for big multi-projects, anything of four units and up. And the other ones are for single family homes and other smaller things. Given that distinction, I I don't think there should be standards per neighborhood. It's, if you're trying to streamline the process, you can't say, we do this over here and this over here. We are on the borderline between these two neighborhoods. Which neighborhood are you really in? It shouldn't be. Um, it should be for the entire city, given the type of structure that you're working with.
Commissioner Choi?
No, I I agree with that. I think I I would be hesitant to, I would be upset to see prescription on architectural style adding to what um Commissioner Quake and Commissioner Wong had said. Um, I think it it, if it's new architecture or a new building, it needs to be of the time. In fact, to set it apart from trying to recreate or in some cases mock a particular style back in time. Um, I think to what Commissioner Davis said, we should, it should be able to cite response, whether it's topography or um the distances to 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 on, no, or or the width of the street, but less so about the geography of of or the political borderlines of which neighborhood, you know, it's is which.
I think the difficulty becomes like for those uh neighborhoods where uh, you know, privacy issues come into play and light and, you know, the whole purpose of having the second story setbacks, uh having those principles to address those issues. Then where do you draw the line that, you know, this house, you know, should have that, but this house already has that and that doesn't need to address that? Or how do you get across, you know, uh, that concept with the enforcement of, you know, making the designer seriously address the issue without imposing that strict, you know, setback requirement? So it's it's kind of a tricky issue too. You know, otherwise people are just gonna, again, build as big as they can, as as close to the uh fence as they can and without any regard to neighbors, privacy, or sliding and so forth. So, you know, I guess by having those requirements, it makes everybody uh have that same standard. But then they often come to us for variances requests and then yes, I mean, that's that's alternative, right, which we have right now.
Actually, I have a quick question on that. Um, if we were to implement the standard, by which forum would neighbors have to voice their concerns about a potential design that may affect their, you know, privacy issues or or shadow studies and things like that?
Oh, that's a, that's a tricky question because the answer is that um it depends. If it is uh the objective standards by which, you know, no discretion is is allowed, then uh we don't have any standard that that would address their concern, then there wouldn't be any.
Right. So so even if a project needs every requirement and the standard, but it looks right into somebody's, you know, window or or into like the kitchen or the bathroom, wherever it it'll be approved because it meets the standard.
Right. So that that's why um the the goal then is to create a standard that would would minimize or limit that envision, you know, those impacts and and create something that would prevent that from happening. Now, i- in in areas like the downtown, right, I mean, that's, you have a multi-six-story, multifamily building that's going to be impossible to do, but um things that uh, you know, uh for single family at least, um, we could create some standards that would require uh windows to be offset. You know, percentage of windows or, you know, something like that. But there's also a double-edged sword because if you do require it, it could it, the way the house is designed might, the windows might not line up with the the way that they're, or planned to. So it's tricky.
It's a tough task. You have a hard job.
But we we see, commonly see privacy as as um common concern. Shadows is is one. And then there are some cities that have examples of standards that relate to shadowing. But in my experience from my time here, that when we look at the shadow studies, it hasn't been an issue in terms of the way that the addition or the house is set. It didn't interfere with the, with the sunlight significantly. Now, there might be some, maybe like during the winter where the sun is lower, but with, when you're building, there inevitably might be some shadow, but as long as it's not passing the shadow on, you know, half of the year, then we've generally been tolerable of some shading. As long as it's not creating a significant impact.
Change is always difficult for everyone.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Vice Chair Davis and Commissioner Choi about the, that we should have one uniform set of standards for the city rather than being specific by neighborhood. Any further comments on, on the first discussion point or should we move to the next one? All right. How about, sorry, Commissioner Wong, you had one more thing to say?
Oh, no, just that, yeah, obviously we're not going to resolve it here. We're not having a work, working meeting. So just hopefully the staff and the consultant can take these comments and try to address that.
Okay. So next discussion question was what design standards should be prioritized? Anyone have a feedback on, on this? Sorry, Vice Chair Davis.
The ones that are the biggest problem for the applicants, where they're most confused, should be prioritized. If that's what the sticking point is and causes a year of back and forth, whatever those are, should be prioritized. If it's materials, if it's privacy, whatever it is, have we, have we, are, are there plans to survey applicants, pass, or just talk to architects and designers and ask them, when you got, got a client and they're coming into Millbrae, do they go, oh gosh? Or do they say, okay, I know how to work in Millbrae? What, where are their sticking points? Because that must be the biggest points of contention and confusion that we need to fix. And anything that can be put into numbers to make it more clear. These are meant to be objective. That's what's so hard about design. It's not, it's not objective. It is subjective. But if there's anything that can be quantified, those probably go to the top as well.
Other comments from commissioners?
And it's also, yeah, it's not turning, it's also subjective, depending on who the neighbors are. Some people are a lot more fussy or don't want the change. So it's just a sticking point.
I, I agree with you, although I don't think the project success should be dependent on how your neighbor, like your neighbor's personality either, right? It, it should stand on merit based on the site response. Absolutely.
Over the years, it, it seems like that is always the sticking point.
You know, what would be also be interesting for me is if staff or, or, you know, your firm could look at past discussions at this planning commission. There are, sometimes there are topics that come before as a question that we're like, well, sure, like, like, why is this even a question, right? There are some things that are so, sometimes I'm confused why it's not ministerial, right? I think those could just be easily, those are the low-hanging fruit for the standard and say, hey, let's just list all these, right? I, you know, I think we could easily figure out what those items might be. I think that might be helpful to provide guidance so that we, the designers or the applicants could just take care of those without too much concern.
Other comments? Yeah, I, I would just echo what Vice Chair Davis said about surveying applicants who have come before the city before to understand, like, it's kind of like, it feels like, you know, it's kind of like an employee review, right? This is like the best opportunity to examine past experience and look for ways to improve. And so I think that's definitely something that should be considered. One thing in terms of specific designs, design standards that have to prioritize is that I've seen a lot of, on, throughout the slides, both on the single-family and multifamily design standards, there was, there seemed to be a recurring emphasis on articulation in order to vary things. And one of the more interesting things I've seen in, in San Mateo City's objective design standards for multifamily was an alternative for how to vary the facade of a building without vertical articulation. You know, I think that there's, that, I, I think, you know, my impression is that, that creating these, you know, recesses and things like that, it, it gives, it, it, it can increase the cost of a project, it can mean fewer units get built. And so I'd be interested to see an exploration of like how we can, you know, allay some of the concerns and visual impact of massing without necessarily resorting to arctic, vertical and horizontal articulation as the only means of doing that. Yeah, Commissioner Wong.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So again, just reiterating, I guess we're talking about residential, but also we're talking about the other commercial developments, mixed-use developments. So I think for the larger mixed-use developments, you know, still retaining kind of the smaller town welcoming fronts and allowing living spaces in the front. So there's more neighborly and welcoming, especially downtown. We don't want minimalist, big giant walls with, you know, flat side walls so that, you know, we want it, make it feel like it's integrated with community, more residential in our community, not minimalist, industrial, you know, cost as mentioned, come into play in a lot of these developments and developers are trying to, you know, do minimalists so they can have affordable housing and so forth. But whatever we can get about, including elements to look at more residential. And there's just some outstanding previous mixed-use buildings that adhere to the, you know, Mediterranean style in our city. So hopefully we can retain some of that with the larger developments. Smaller developments is Commissioner Davis said that if there is compromises that can be made when neighbors have an issue, like views are obstructed, I would say that if they can make some compromises, we always come to the commission with requesting variance. I think we've been pretty good about allowing a lot of variances, so like flat roofs and, and trying to minimize heights or make some concessions so that it has a trade-off or a balance. I think the commission's been really amenable to that.
Another area I would want to prioritize as part of the design standards is on ADUs. I think from the perspective of the designer, it's, it's, it's not just for Millbrae, but it's very lacking on what a good ADU design would be and should be. It's, it's new space for a lot of Californian cities for very good reasons. And even looking at like San Jose or Berkeley, they're, they're looking at possibly allowing owners to sell off their ADU parcels. So I, I think we need to look for, not that we're asking for that anytime soon, but I think we need to look forward to paying close attention to ADU and giving it the love that it, it now deserves and the attention that it's been getting.
Vice Chair Davis?
And one more thing, landscaping. And do everything we can to tie it to the reasons why we want landscaping. There was some comment in either the online survey or the workshop about energy efficiency and design, but landscaping can play in on that as well in terms of shade and all those other things. So we may already have some of these things, but, you know, saying, you know, preference for native plants, more plants than rocks, that kind of thing. But get more specific about, you know, how much and what kind of landscaping we want to see.
Sorry, Commissioner Quake, do you have something to say? Okay. So then I, I would actually piggyback on, on that comment from Vice Chair Davis also. I, I think, again, going back to San Mateo's objective design standards, they called out pedestrian movement and the best pedestrian realm as something that for multifamily development is important to emphasize. And so I think that could be one way to, you know, particularly, you know, one way for multifamily developments to successfully create inviting spaces that people want to be in, is emphasizing that characteristic of it. One, I, I actually had a technical, more technical question in terms of the cutoff. Why was the cutoff between three triplexes and fourplexes in terms of the single, the single-family design standards versus multifamily? And particularly with laws like SB nine, would that mean that if you did a lot split and added two units, would that mean you would, you would be subjected to the, the larger multifamily design standards? But if you did the lot split but only added one unit on one of the lots, you would be subjected to the single-family design standards? Just want to make sure it's not a weird edge condition that's being created.
Yeah, it, it was taken because it's defined in the code. The code already defines multifamily as being more than four units, four, four units. So that's the reason why it was used that way. We just want to be consistent with the existing definition.
All right. Any, the next discussion question here is are there any topics that should be added to the project? Anyone have any? Yeah, Vice Chair Davis?
I'm not sure if it's a, a topic, but will there be a mechanism for review on evolution of the design standards over time? Since aesthetics change, needs change, neighborhoods change, we're trying to make sure that people can, that a community can evolve. Will there be a formal process to review these things every X years to make sure that they're still up to what's happening now?
We don't have a set timeframe. We haven't established, you know, when we're going to come back to the, you know, the commission or the council to see whether these standards are still reflective of the community. I think that's, that's something that we can, we have a discussion with the council about. If they so choose to, you know, revisit this in 10 years or whatever, we could, we would have to approach it at that time because also councils change. So we would have to seek direction from council on that.
I actually think it would be a great idea to plan for a check-in period, like a check-in, maybe after a year, two years to see how staff are feeling about the quality of the projects they're coming in, what they're, what the challenges the staff are facing, trying to ministerially approve the, the projects based on the new standard. And whether that's internal to staff or at a session like this one or state council, I think that, that could be flexible. But I think it'll be important to plan for that so that along the way, staff's collecting feedback and trying to understand, well, how is, did this work as intended or how can we make it better? Should there be a future amendment?
Any other commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Wong.
Right. Just reiterating what Commissioner Davis mentioned, landscaping plans, I think it'd be good to have sections describing native plants. I know a lot of times we're in the drought tolerance, but I found that native plants just thrive like crazy around here with our humidity and fog sometimes and moisture that don't necessarily have to even just go completely drought tolerant, but native plants, like look up Santa Cruz type plants and so forth, natives, Santa Cruz Mountains is really grow and thrive well. Sections might be added on environment such as, you know, just wind direction. So like if larger developments design outdoor living spaces, you know, you have a guidance in lieu of having that public partnership, you can have like a, just a general wind currents shown so that if they do design outdoor living spaces and they can kind of take that into consideration or planting more trees and native trees. I know we have a theme of these palm trees, but, you know, I'd, I'd say consider taking a lot of variations or different canopies so that we can have windbreaks and, and break up wind and create a better environment for our city would be amazing.
Commissioner Quake?
You would think that the developers, before they actually designed a project, would review that? I mean, we're in a very windy area. But it's good to remind them.
You would think.
You would think, but everything goes minimalistic. So, you know, don't, don't expect anything.
I know, I know. People can't believe how windy it can get.
From the pers, I'm sorry. From the perspective of designer, one thing that differentiates a good design guideline from one that doesn't is one which addresses or acknowledges site parcels that are not rectangular or flattish, right? Some do it very well and with intention and some are sort of left to staff to take care of whatever condition that might be. And given that Millbrae's on a very, on a varied topography, I think they'll be important to take this opportunity to do that well here.
Just going along with the environment also, there's other considerations, noise, lighting, you know, design along the train tracks, like the Orencho Development. I thought that, you know, they probably could have done more for plantings along train tracks, even for their own residences. There's buffers that they can, yeah, there's buffers that they can think about or plantings that might reduce noise from tracks and all these environmental conditions could just list off and cite as issues. So maybe they might have guidelines or direction for how to develop their properties.
And the airplanes. You can be two blocks away in one place, the noise is much more prevalent than in another area. It's amazing.
I think the most, the best case is say if the airport sold off all their lands and then we were able to develop all that and we were able to develop a whole environment and buffer and trees and, you know, there's a lot of property that's just done undeveloped wetlands.
But those are important too, so.
Right. But always need to manage, otherwise you get flooding and a lot of issues and, you know, it could be developed.
One, one topic I think that might be added is, I, I like that you, you all are considering sustainability already. I think when it comes to glass specifically, it's important to make sure we, if there's a lot of glass in a project, that it's bird safe. Another thing I just thought of also is that I think a lot of our design requirements in terms of setbacks and lot coverage are, you know, don't take the lot, consider lot size into account. And so for some houses on very large lots, it's really easy to achieve your, what you want to do because the lot is so large and, but, you know, if there's, we're in a, one of the more denser parts of Millbrae, it might be much harder to, to meet those same setbacks. And so I think maybe there could be some flexibility in, in, in that respect with respect to lot sizes. All right. The next discussion question that's on here is what design standard should be considered for building, massing and articulation? Anyone have any specific comments on this discussion question? Yes, Commissioner Choi?
So I have a question. Sometimes what comes in front of the planning commission are setback or seeking for variances, right? Where I'm just or seeking for variances, right, where I'm just kind of setback violation was already built in. Like, so it's grandfathered in. In this case, would they have to come to the commission to seek approval for building something? Or sort of building exactly as existing? Or would this be, could this, or might this be part of the standard where, hey, if it's already like this, then go ahead, you know, build your envelope or your massing accordingly?
But typically our setbacks are, our setbacks are established by zoning districts. So for example, if you're at the ground floor in the single family zoning district, your side setback is five feet. So that would apply to all the properties. If particular house has an existing house that's four feet away.
Right.
Then we do have provision in the code where they can seek relief in that's through the conditional use permit or an exception, and we've, we've done, we've done those before and we've approved them.
Just recently.
Yeah. And so, you know, if we're talking about just citywide, we do have some of those mechanisms. But it, e- even if, so if you have a five-foot setback, side setback requirement, it would be difficult for the city to determine that, say, an entire two blocks has four-foot setbacks.
Right.
So we wouldn't know that, so we couldn't say, well, you know, everyone has four-foot setbacks, so you should be able to. So we, we look at each instances, each instance individually, a case-by-case basis. So that's the reason why, for at least the, the, the ground floor setbacks is, is challenged to, to determine that. But for the upper story setbacks, it's typically either setback or you're not. I mean, it's very few instances where it's like, you know, you have to judge between is it two, three, two feet or three feet? Typically, it's like it's straight up or, you know, you're, you're setback. And if, if there is setback, then we, we typically expect the, the project to, to meet the setbacks. And a lot of the time it, it doesn't because the neighborhood doesn't have two-story setbacks. And we're okay with that and, you know, that's perfectly fine. So it's a little bit, of course, it's a little bit easier for the upper story setbacks. But when it comes to the ground floors, a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, Commissioner Quigg.
You know, this had come up and it's not in any of this, but I just thought of it and I wanted to bring it up to your attention. There's a small area in Millbrae, kind of between Lomita, in that general area. And a lot of the streets are pretty curved. And we've come into situations that it's very difficult for people to do second stories because the way the lots are, are formed. They're not square lots, not even close to square. And we have had those issues and, and not for a while, but there for a while there was. And people really complaining because of the way they were rounded, yeah. It was difficult, difficult. So I think since we're kind of looking at this, to be aware of that area, that there might be some exceptions that need to happen. Yeah.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes, so if there's going to be a legal review of this document, make sure it's, you know, meets any challenges. I don't know if it's worth looking into if there's credits we can give the, either single family homeowner or even the larger mixed-use developments so that like a trade-off between impact fees and adding more architectural elements or art features to beautify the city or planting plans. You know, if, if there's no, no requirements for them to put in all these articulation and design elements and architecture and beautify the city. Or if, or if it is required and we're able to get impact fees, maybe look into how we can negotiate with developers or encourage people to do more plantings or get credits, you know, for, for doing that. Because otherwise they may just go, again, minimalist and a lot of people don't even come in with a landscape plan or, you know, give them some incentive or credit to be able to, to do a landscape plan, have a really nice planting plan. I don't know how you can work that out, but whatever we can do to encourage, you know, these articulation and, and architectural elements to really, you know, make our, our buildings look attractive and nicer, maybe think creatively somehow we were able to do that.
Something Commissioner Choi said earlier reminded me of a, a thought that I had while reviewing this. And I think, you know, I, I think it would be interesting to see how, when these new design standards are created, like how, I think we, something that needs to be considered is like how many current homes in Millbrae would fall afoul of those standards. You know, it seems to me like if, if a large fraction of the homes that exist in the city could not be rebuilt to the same shape as they are today, there's something amiss in our code. You know, I think, you know, certainly tastes change and all that, but, you know, I think I was, there, I'm thinking of one house in particular that's maybe six or seven blocks from me. The, the house comes right up to the, to the, to the sidewalk. It's a corner lot. And it, it, you know, I know that we have setback requirements, so if that person ever chose to tear that building down, they would, the lot's pretty small, so then whatever new house goes there would be also significantly smaller. So they're kind of trapped in the existing shape because they, and existing building, because it doesn't seem like there's any feasible way that could be rebuilt to the same form without coming to the planning commission for some kind of exception or a conditional use. So I think let's, let's make sure that we pay attention, are attentive to that. And I think, I think we don't need to, you know, do a specific analysis for every single house, but like, you know, I think we have a, could get a directional sense of how, how many of these, how many of the current buildings could be rebuilt under the standards that we're now setting.
But, but, so Chair Chan, I think in that example, that applicant would have to seek an exemption to, because it, it would be, it would be awful if they can't, if they substantially reduce the intended use of that property, right? I think we need to offer a way for this applicant then to seek exception or to come to commission and have that discussion.
All right.
I, I, for massing articulation, I, I, building articulation, I think it's going to be really hard to make objective. It's, it's just one of those things where different designers, different architects will have a different solution. Some are more appropriate than others. I would hate for us to put something down on paper that would encourage mediocrity when it comes to architecture. I think we all want to strive for design excellence, but it'll be a challenge for sure.
All right, the last discussion question here is what does site design requirements should be considered for design standards and what should be avoided? Any commissioners want to offer any thoughts on this discussion question? Yes, Vice Chair Davis.
I think the avoided is a much easier list to make than required. I think we already know what kinds of things we need in there. But many people have set it too strict so that there's no creativity or we end up with, you know, same old house on every other block. Nothing by neighborhood, just by, just by building type. Too many, how do I say this, limiting style choices. They say, oh, we prefer Mediterranean. Now, maybe we don't, but to, don't limit it so much because then you do end up with the same old, same old everywhere.
I, I will just echo what Commissioner Davis said. You know, in the slides previous to this one, what caught my eye was how many different factors were being actively considered for standards? And I think if we actually did create a standard for everything that was listed, that would, that would feel to be just by sheer number of different factors to be overly prescriptive. So I definitely agree that less is more when it comes to setting these objective design standards. All right, we made it through all of these discussion questions. Do any of the commissioners want to offer any additional thoughts that they haven't had a chance to voice yet? Oh, yes, Vice Chair Davis.
I, I saw a few mentions of historic districts and, and we don't have any historic districts. So I would not want to see anything about that anywhere.
Commissioner Wong.
I think the challenge again, like we mentioned, is just, you know, emphasizing, you know, these issues of privacy, view, light, et cetera. A lot of the issues that come, come across, the conflicts with the neighbors on these specific issues occur when, you know, we, we have to impose those, those strict standards and codes like setbacks, second-story setbacks, views, height limits, et cetera. And a lot of times we have to emphasize that, you know, that's the code that we have to go by and that, that helps make the compromise with the neighbors. Because the other person, neighbor wants to go up as high as they can, 30 feet, and it may block, partially block the other neighbor's view. So then we cite those codes that, you know, that's why we have that restriction. It could be higher, but we limit it. I guess the challenge is, is how do we allow flexibility for those properties that don't have those issues? So like if, you know, you have a very large lot and the first floor setback is maybe 15 feet from the fence, doesn't, may not make sense to require a second-story setback of another five feet. So how do you get across, you know, making sure that, we emphasize in our codes that the issues in consideration of privacy and light and, you know, shadows, et cetera? Or, you know, that's what the code is, is for, but that may not apply in some cases if there's no privacy issues and how do you allow that? But maybe something reasonable people can accept or understand so that, you know, they do have the flexibility to, to make, you know, changes or variances. And then it's hard for, I know it's hard, going to be hard for the staff to make that call also. But I guess that's kind of what we're trying to allude to in this discussion.
Any other commissioners want to offer, yes, Vice Chair Davis.
Sorry, one more, one more thought, just, I always want to remind us that especially for residences, not the big projects, but single-family homes, duplexes and whatnot, people do have private property rights. And everywhere in the country, it costs a lot of money because it's all relative. But it costs a lot of money to get a little chunk of Millbrae. And within a reasonable set of rules, they should be able to build what they need and like.
Yeah, I think one, one final thought I would offer just based on what I've heard from the Vice Chair Davis and Commissioner Wong, right? I think in terms of organizing these standards, I think it's good to articulate what the goals are for each. So, you know, in terms of, you know, for privacy, here are some of the things that are encoded in the standards in order to meet that objective. For breaking up of massing, here's some of the, the ways to meet that objective. And I wonder if there is a way to like score each of those standards so that once you exceed the score, you've met the standards rather than you have to tick necessarily every box. I don't know what the, what the, what the state law prescribes in this respect, but I think that if that, if that kind of mechanism exists to determine compliance with standard or not, that might offer the flexibility so you can do some of the trade-offs like what Commissioner Wong was saying, where it's like, why do you need to set the upper story back if you're already setback a certain, a number of feet?
But once you start introducing scoring, then, then you're introducing a, a subjective mechanism to the process, right?
That's fair, I, which I, I was, yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with the specific details of the law to know what the, what that, what that, whether that's the case. I was just kind of throwing it out there as a, just as a brainstorming, you know?
We understand what you're, what you're trying to get at. And I think what you're trying to say is, you know, if you maybe, given a menu of options you choose, you know, you have to choose two out of these five.
I like that, yeah.
Then, then you, you have the ability to, you know, you can do one, two, three, or one, two, or three or four. Then you have, that's an objective standard where clearly you meet, you've got two different materials, you're, you know, got, whatever it is, and then, then you meet that, something like that, is that, that's kind of what I'm.
Yeah, that, that, that would be the same, have the same intent, yeah.
And I just want to be clear, there, there is no law asking us to do this, right? We're doing this on our own, there's no state law, there's no.
Yeah, so there, there, there is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there, there is in that housing projects have to comply with the objective standards. And if the residential project does not, it, it's intended, so as Monica alluded to in the beginning, the, the state wants to eliminate as much discretion on local level as possible. And, and by doing that, they said that you can't deny the project unless it meets, if it meets your objective standards. So it would have to be objective so that the development community has, have an idea of what, what is expected without having, you know, last-minute surprises when they come to the planning commission meeting and say, you know, like, well, we don't like your color, we're denied. So it's, it's.
Yeah, I might add to that, so the state doesn't say you must develop objective design standards and adopt them. However, the state does say that you, you no longer have the ability to deny a project based on a discretionary review. So then the alternative is to develop objective design standards. So the answer is no, but also yes. And also yes, because the council directed us to do it and there's a, the policies in the general plan, right, yeah.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair Davis.
What will be the role of the planning commission after this?
That's a good question. It remains to be seen and is in flux, but what I think, what the role of the planning commission will be in the future is, is Chair Chan mentioned, there could be, I could envision a scenario where there'd be two options. You know, you have the objective standards or you can go the discretionary route. We also have exceptions and variances to which if you can't meet the objective standards, you need an exception for whatever reason, maybe a lot is small and you can't build to the setback. You need zero setbacks and we could look at those in case-by-case basis. A lot of cities, I think our consultants said, are eliminating, you know, discretionary review, the planning commission. But so what I think remains to be seen what, what that'll look like. We'll know a little bit more later, but we, we still have some discretionary, especially for variances and things like that, maybe conditional use permit. Certainly also commercial developments, so offices, those aren't subject to the, this is just for residential.
But if I read the presentation correctly, multifamily complexes or housing would still come to commission, but our job would be to evaluate that against the standards, correct? No?
It, it, it could, it could. Now, you know, I think we'll have to, and I think the city council will also chime in on this and what, how we, how, how that review body will look like. But what I do is that you have a review, a set of objective standards and this, the planning commission could, could be kind of like a. And the planning commission could, could be kind of like a, could be an oversight committee, if you will, on the review of that. So staff will review it, ensure that it meets the objective standards. And then the planning commission could review that. But with that, you can't really, if it meets it, it meets it, so.
I actually had a friend who's an environmental lawyer who asked me this this weekend when I was telling her we would be talking about this. But then for large multifamily projects, if there is an objective design standard route, does that mean that multifamily projects are no longer subject to SEQA? Or are there other aspects of the project that would still trigger some discretionary review process that would make them subject to SEQA?
Depends on the project, but the short answer is that, at least here in Millbrae, there's a lot of exemptions that are afforded to for, by being in close proximity to transit, we use an exemption for the former Office Depot site and then the 1301 Broadway project, the affordable housing project that we just approved a few months ago. But, you know, it, and so we're fortunate in that we have a transit station and we have El Camino. And there are streamlining provisions for that and also infill developments. So if you're taking out an existing building, there are the infill exemptions. And so the only projects that I see would be subject to SEQA would be the very large ones that aren't covered by the specific plan EIR. So that would be like a redevelopment of the Starwood project. Or I'm sorry, redevelopment of Aloft or West End, those are in a specific plan. But all the other projects that we have approved were either tiered off or used SEQA. They use the specific plan EIR that it was approved or exempt.
Any other comments forthcoming? Well, I really, I know that we ran quite a little longer than we normally do, but I really want to thank the commissioners for this very fruitful discussion on a very important topic. So really thank you all for bearing with us through this whole process. I've enjoyed it despite the, how the lateness of the hour for us.
Well, thank you and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for all the feedback. It's very helpful for us moving forward.
All right, moving on to item six, we have staff updates. Any staff, any updates?
Yeah, just a quick update for you for the future planning commission meetings. We will have one on the 18th, just two Mondays from now. We'll have one item on that, on that agenda. And then also we're looking like the first meeting in December. That is the second, second December two, we'll be having that one as well. One or two projects on that meeting. And then just one item on the packets that you receive in, through email. City has traditionally sent out the email with the links. You have the staff report and the attachments, there's different attachments. And those are linked through the city's laser fish. So when you click on it, it goes to the laser fish system. The city council meetings, there's just one link for that item and it has the staff report with all the attachments, kind of in one, one document. We were, were looking to you if you would be amenable to receiving the documents that way. Because having the attachments in separate links, if you wanted to, for example, look for the attachments related to a project through laser fish, you'd have to look for that individual attachment. You can find the staff report and it'll reference attachments, but then you wouldn't see it after that document. Does that kind of make sense? So if you, if the commission is amenable, we would, moving forward, just have it one document. But also you have the packet, the physical packet. So you can look through each individual attachment individually. I know that scrolling through one, it's really long, it's going to take a long while to get to the attachment. But you also would have the packet. So it's a little bit of a minor change, if that's something the commission is willing to be okay with.
Right.
And whatever it turns out, we'll get used to it.
Yeah, and for the public as well, if they're looking for a specific, like I want to know what, everything that was reviewed by the commission on this item, you could find it in one place rather than
Yeah.
having to look for it. Okay.
Just a comment though, aren't some of the larger developments, don't they have their own web postings or links to websites?
Yes.
So.
And we might actually, because of the size limitations, depending on the project, we may need to separate the project plans out anyway. Because the plans typically take a larger, and I'm not exactly sure. We haven't looked into what the size limitations for our website is. So there might be a instance where we would have larger projects and the project plan just separated out for size.
I would say that for larger developments where public might be interested, yeah, might be good to have separate links. So if they go through the agenda, they can find it easily versus the rest of the agenda and small residential developments and miscellaneous.
Is there, is there a printed copy here at City Hall where the public could come and view at their request? Okay, perfect.
At the library.
Okay, okay.
The packet that you receive at the library as well.
Great, thank you.
And kind of on that same, relatedly, the, we print out packets for the commission. And we just wanted to survey, see if any commissioners would be, wouldn't mind to just take, have an electronic copy. I mean, you know, it takes production of the paper. I mean, we can, we're happy to print them out, but some commissioners prefer to review it online. And then also, yeah, so I mean, and we could also, we would, we could also just have the plans printed out. So if you wanted to see plans larger, right, 11 by 17 or larger, we could, we could probably do that. So if you wanted, if you're okay with electronic version, we wouldn't print out like the staff report and we just give you the plans or however you want it, just so that we could, it's a paper, but.
I think I saw Commissioner Wong express interest in that. Yeah, I'd be willing to try the paperless route, except for the plans. I think it is helpful to have that and I do like the half-size plans, so.
Okay.
I like paper.
Okay.
I also like paper, but I'm willing to try it out.
Commissioner Quigg, what was your preference?
For me, it's easier with the paper, but I do look at it online, so.
All right, seems like we have two fully paperless, one paperless except for plans and two paper, right?
We'll try it out. And then this is mainly for the commissioners who weren't here at the last meeting. So the, just a quick announcement, the commission committee, commission and committee years of service recognition luncheon is this Wednesday, November 6th at 11:30 a.m. at Millbrae Recreation Center. Please RSVP to administration@ci.milbrae.ca.us. The RSVP date was November 1st, but just want to remind you, if you haven't, probably still RSVP. So that's this November 6th and that's all the updates I have.
Thank you, staff. Any announcements from planning commissioners? All right, Vice Chair Davis.
A few things you've reminded us in the past, but I'll do it too. Tomorrow is election day. If you haven't voted yet, please make sure you do. Second, next Monday, there will be a flag raising in honor of Veterans Day. It'll be on Broadway at 500 Broadway at 9 a.m. I hope to see more, every year it gets bigger, but someday I want to see it to be huge. Our veterans deserve that recognition. And lastly, Commissioner Quigg and I had the privilege of touring San Mateo County's Navigation Center in Redwood City last week. And it was absolutely amazing. I mean, they, they said pretty much ours is unique and the best. And it's true, the services that they're providing to homeless people is amazing. It's one of several facilities that the county has. And this is a special one for people to transition from being homeless to learning how to, you know, take care of yourself and find a job and learn some skills so they can transition into more permanent housing. It's a remarkable thing.
Do any other commissioners have announcements they'd like to make? All right, well, we've reached the end of our agenda. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Have a good night.